Crescent City's Council Meeting. Mr. Attorney Bob Black, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, no actions were taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. We'll call to order and could you please take the role?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Enya.
Here.
Councilmember Holly.
Here.
Councilmember Shlong.
Here.
Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
And Mayor Murray.
Here, thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Shlong to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll pass acknowledgment since there are none and move on to the consent calendar. That'd be approval of the warrant claims for the period April 3rd, 2012 through April 16th, and approval of the byway weekly payrolls for the period ending March 24th paid on March 30th, 2012.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. Palazzo, can you tell us why there was so much overtime in Public Works?
I would have to look at the specific time cards and then get back to you on that.
Okay, because it's like more than double what the police did, so I thought that was...
I'm going to step down and assume that was because of the storm event and the EOC being opened up and everything that we had to do with managing all the water that we received in that one weekend.
Do you not have to sign off on overtime?
The directors sign off on the individual employees overtime.
Okay.
Did any of that have to do with those two ships that floated into our area? Or was that a previous payroll?
Oh, that was several payrolls ago. This, I'm sure, had to deal with the storm event that we had. And we had a lot of crews out, you know, working with rotor rudder and those other trucks to make sure, you know, we had a lot of water coming through the Second Street pipes and the lift stations at the harbor. So we're managing those operations.
Council may want to... It just makes me think that maybe you should also be looking at that overtime so that you have a good handle on it.
I will do that.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll move for approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Enya?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. We'll move on to communications, public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, the mayor, please state your name and whether you're a city or county residence for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And we have a change in format, so if you exceed your three minutes, we will turn off the mic. Is there any public comment? Mr. Miles?
Ms. Murray, I'm aware why there was extra overtime during this rainy season. Our storm system and our sewer system during heavy rains, especially around certain businesses, there's flooding when sewage and the excess water from infiltration. And what the city has to do, they have to call in the street department because the street department has what they call a vacuum system, and they actually have to pump out manholes. I have some observations I want to make tonight. And one of them is when Eric Weir did all the cement work in the park, some thought did not go into that project. Because with the sidewalks being roughed, it makes it impossible for Ron Cole to do pastels in the park. And what I heard, and it's shocking, because if you guys could get any money out of the chamber for sidewalks, I'd like to know when you did it. Because a little birdie told me that at the planning commission, Ron Cole was misinformed, that the chamber in years past paid for some sidewalks.
Sorry, thanks. Move on to the Housing Authority. I'm trying to get used to our new system here. Adjourn to the Housing Authority. And please note that all five directors are here. Same thing, public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the Housing Authority on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City Housing Authority. Comments of public interest or on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the authority is not able to undertake extended discussion or to act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. After receiving recognition from the chair, please state your name for the record, and any comments that are not at the microphone will not be on public record. Is there any public comment on the Housing Authority? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar.
I move to approve items one and two on the consent calendar.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Could you please pull the vote?
Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shlong?
Yes.
Director Holly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enya?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Yes, thank you. There is no Housing Director report, but I see her in the audience tonight. No public hearings, no continuing business, no new business, so we will adjourn the Housing Authority and move on to item number five, which is the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. And please note that all five directors are present. Is there any public comment? Same thing as always, three minutes.
Recently, I purchased this book. It's called Driven Out: The Forgotten War Against the Chinese Americans. After reading it, I have a concern. It tells the history how the good citizens of Crescent City drove out our Chinese population in the 1880s and 50s. We had what is known as purges.
Excuse me, Richard, is this regarding the successor of the Redevelopment Agency?
Yes, it does. And I want to explain. The Chinese owned property, large sections of property in a redevelopment area at one time. It is my belief that one of these days, we may have a tort claim against the city. Because I don't think the city can prove clear title to some of the property it owns. And I'll tell you why I believe this. Our courthouse was burnt down many years ago, and many of the records were destroyed. At the time of these purges, property was confiscated. And that property was never returned to its rightful owners. I find that very interesting. So I would advise this body, because of the history of Crescent City, especially the property the city owns on Second Street and Front Street, that the city may want to find some of the original owners of that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the successor of the Redevelopment Agency?
Seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I need to recuse myself from the consent calendar. There are numbers three and four. Could be a possible conflict of interest because of an employee of the school district. So I'll leave the area.
You can go into our closed chambers then. We'll come and get you when we're done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, on... It was item number four? Yeah, item number four, there was a change in the exhibit. I can have Mr. McDonald address if you'd like.
Okay.
And get to that item.
Robin gave those to us before we started the meeting tonight. And if anybody in the public would like a fresh copy, I believe they are in the back. Oh, Robin has them right there, so, okay.
Can you address it? You want to do items one through three first and then do four?
Okay, approval of the regular minutes of March 19th, 2012, of the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Number two is approved warrant claims of March 20th, 2012 to April 16th, 2012. And number three is consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution Number 2012-16A, Resolution of the City of Crescent City, Redevelopment Agency of the City of Crescent City Approving and Adopting an amended initial draft of the recognized obligation payments scheduled pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 341771. Bob, have you reviewed these?
I have reviewed the legal services part.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar so far?
I move to approve items one through three.
Second.
Yes, please. Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shlong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enya?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Yes, thank you. On to item number four on the consent calendar. Consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution Number 2012-17A, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, Serving as the Successor Agency to the dissolved Redevelopment Agency of the City of Crescent City, Approving and Adopting the Recognized Obligation Payments Scheduled for the Period of July 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012, Pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section 3411-341771. Do we have a motion?
I think we're going to have some discussion first.
I'd ask Mr. McDonald to address those changes to the board.
It looks like the water fund amounts have been lowered.
But the total outstanding debt obligation that begins this period, when we did some revised cash flows, we didn't realize that we missed the payments that were shown on the first ROPS, the second one. So it was just a beginning balance change. None of the other columns changed, just the beginning balance. And we wanted it to coincide so when we did our cash flows to the Oversight Board, everything would fit together. And this came up late Friday afternoon. It was too late for the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or technical questions or clarifications?
Question on contract for legal services. We have showing $36,000 for Best Best Krieger, $18,000 for Robert Black. Can you be more specific what that covers?
It's really just an estimate of what potential legal costs we could foresee, you know, for a six-month period. It's... The way it looks like this schedule is going to be used is more or less a maximum amount that can be paid without amending this. So we kind of have to go with a reasonable number for the next six months or twelve months.
Well, and we've had the discussion about the cases before. Part of it was the Barnes lawsuit. And I think there was another one. I can't remember, but I know one of the cases was the Barnes lawsuit.
That was one of them. And if there's...
Barnes, sorry, without the T.
Any major changes to that litigation, then we may have to come back and make some modifications. But we tried to estimate an amount that would be reasonable, that we would expect to either see this thing keep going or if it goes away altogether, then our legal estimates will be a little high.
And this is a complicated issue.
Very.
I would just say that if there's a shift in the legal theory of that lawsuit, it could get more expensive. As is, I don't necessarily expect it to go up to these monthly amounts. I think that would be unusual if it stays as is, but it could change.
I was going to ask if you were doing public comment. I was going to make a motion if not.
Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the directors.
I move to approve item number four with the amended schedule as presented to the council.
Second.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Director... Excuse me, Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shlong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enya?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Yes, thank you. Now we can bring Mr. Holly back in. Item number six, this is nuisance abatement hearing for 635...
What about... We passed both resolutions. I know. We didn't adjourn the meeting first. Oh, I had something to report.
I'm sorry. A little rusty, I've been gone for a couple of meetings. No public hearings, new business, and Councilmember Shlong has a comment she'd like to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to report out an ex parte conversation I had. I received a phone call from Randy Baugh, who owns the property on A Street, the old medical center. And he just called to communicate to me that he has decided not to move forward on the condo project and that he is putting the property up for sale. And I wished him luck. And at that point, I called Mr. Palazzo and asked him to follow up with Randy because I think the council will agree with me, but I think it would be important to continue with that plan of allowing the fire department to burn it down. So if that property sits vacant for who knows how long it could in this economy, that it doesn't become even more blighted than it is.
And I also received a call from Mr. Baugh with the same thing that Councilmember Shlong advised, and I also contacted the city manager.
Yeah, and thank you for contacting me. And I did have a lengthy conversation with Mr. Baugh, you know, asking him what status is, what his plans are, where he's going. And, you know, it is his intent to put it up on the market in the next couple of weeks. He has, you know, a lot of the entitlements in place. And some of this I wanted to confer with staff, and I haven't had an opportunity to do that. But he states that his entitlements are in place. He has some loans on the property that really prohibit him from burning down the site or burning down the existing building at this point in time. The lien holders, you know, basically a statement to me was the lien holders wouldn't like the asset to go away.
Have the lien holders seen the asset?
Well, I asked that question, and, you know, his statement is, you know, somebody may want to sell it and fix up the existing building and, you know, utilize it. I don't know if that can be done. That would be, you know, probably more of a planning building, you know, question that I haven't followed up on. So that was his statement. I need to do a little bit more research, you know, with that. But if he does have lien holders that, you know, wouldn't allow him to remove, you know, the existing building, I think there may be some, you know, moving in that direction.
Does lien holder really have the authority to tell him what he can do with the property while he still owns it?
If he has a lien on it.
I mean, the loan. I mean, if you go out and get a loan for a piece of property and you want to demolish an old crappy building on the property to increase the value of the property, I can't see how they would have the legal authority to say no unless he wasn't paying the loan, which, I mean, we don't know that.
Well, I think especially when it's investment property and probably not residential real estate, but investment property, generally speaking, the bank does have authority to protect its investment by checking on your maintenance of the property and asking that you bring tenants in and not leave it vacant. For example, that's what he tried to do at one point, was to have the city become his tenant. So I think they probably do have that authority. I also think that they may be able to be convinced that it would improve or at least be neutral to the value if the building went away. So I think there would be a matter of talking with them.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll continue to work with Mr. Baugh on those discussions. And also, you know, he's going to send me his marketing packet and, you know, kind of see what he's selling the property for. And maybe we can assist in getting the word out to other investors or developers.
I'd like to extend our thank you to him for wanting to invest in our community and sorry that it didn't turn out. Any other comments from directors? Okay, at this time, I'd like to adjourn the successor agency to the redevelopment agency and convene to regular session item number six, which is the public comment.
Property on A Street was not agendicized as a part of the redevelopment tonight. And the way it was brought up by Ms. Shlong, I have a concern, and I want to tell you why. I became aware very recently, let's say this property, the bank is foreclosing on this property, as they are doing now with investment properties. I think that there is a new law the State of California passed that if a foreclosure property is blighted, the city has the authority to burn it down.
Thank you. You had two public comments on this, Richard. I won't let that happen again.
We are required by law, if we receive a call from a developer that... It's called an ex parte conversation, and we are required to report it out. And I am totally legally allowed to do that under a director's report.
Okay, on to item number six, nuisance abatement hearing for 635-6378 Street. And I believe Mr. Taylor has the presentation.
I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with this property by now. It's located at the corner of A and F Street. This is old, dilapidated and abandoned structure. It was duplex at one time, that's why it has both addresses there. Enforcement on this property goes back quite a ways, at least the last six years with the current property owner. Starting in 2006, he was originally contacted about the conditions of the property. So around 2007, 2008, he had agreed to actually burn the property down. That kind of went away, then he came back again and said he wanted to fix the property up. Then in 2009, I had recontacted him about the conditions of the property. Again, he indicated that he was willing to burn the property. Never came through, so here we are again. If you look at the Crescent City Municipal Code, there's actually a litany of violations with our Health and Safety Code through nuisance. The only one really that just streamlined what I put on was a violation of 8.08.020, which is Section C, Buildings or Structures Which Are Partially Destroyed, Abandoned, or Permitted To Remain In The State Of Partial Construction For More Than Six Months Or Beyond Any Period Extension After The Issuance Of A Building Permit. Beyond our own code, we look at the state Health and Safety Code. And initially, you'd look at Section 17920.3, which outlines a lot of the situations that creates substandard structure. And I'll just go through a couple of those real quick. It would be like lack of hot and cold running water, lack of adequate heating, dampness, general dilapidation or improper maintenance, deteriorator inadequate foundations, faulty weather protection such as roofs, walls, that type of thing. And then that takes you to Section 17980 of the California Health and Safety Code, which basically states, and it's attached to the report here, that if any structure is found to be substandard, then it can be... The remedy for that is to either repair, to choose to repair the structure or demolish the structure. So that's kind of takes us through the history of this building. And so I have a quick presentation for you just to get you up to date here. So again, the property is located at the intersection of 8th and F Street. There's a picture looking, it's kind of south from 8th Street at the structure. And you can see it's all boarded up. It has been for several years. Looking west, and you'll see the broken out windows. There's actually another window under the ivy there that's broken out too. You can't see it. Again, this is a nice look at the porch. You can actually see how there's no support anymore under the porch. It's just kind of suspended in midair there. This is kind of a shot of some of the damage. You can see all the dry rot and the termite damage in the structure. You can see there's actually a pretty big chunk missing out of this. And this is some of the perimeter foundation. You can see it's actually sunk and fallen away from the building. It's no longer viable. And again, you can also see a lot of the dry rot on the siding. Power's been pulled for several years, just because of the condition of the structure and actually the condition of the power panels at the time when they were pulled. This was taken a few years ago when I initially went out to the property. And this is looking underneath. It used to be open under the house, and you can still see a lot of the stuff that's stored under there. Some old tires and some paint buckets and different debris. There's a shot of the roof. You can see the deteriorated roof, fascia boards all gone. Again, our shot of the roof. And actually, if you look over in this section here, you can actually see there's holes in the roof that actually go through the inside of the building. Looks like they attempted to repair it with some different type of roof, some rolled roofing there. Again, some, look at the rot. You see some of the dry rot on the fascia boards, crumbling roof, kind of the holes in the exterior of the building. Again, this is the inside of the structure here. Some of the dry rot wall, actually, the condition it's in, because originally when they were going to burn it the first time, they had removed some of the asbestos that was found in the building. Actually, what it does, it's in the mud that's actually in the tape, not the drywall itself. But actually, it's less than 2%, and you can actually burn that. You don't actually have to remove it. Here's a shot from inside the house. There's that window that's covered up. Again, I'm sorry, what's that?
Indoor plants.
Oh, yeah, it makes, like I say, make a good greenhouse. Again, this is one of the bathrooms. You see the flooring, the rot and the mildew mold. You can actually see the little whiskey bottle here. So you see how it does lead to other problems, having abandoned buildings. Again, there's a shot of the roof. You can see right through it. So actually, now it was there, it was raining, it was just pouring water into the structure. But the plants seem to like it. I threw these in just to kind of give you an idea how out of conformity this property is with the surrounding neighborhood. So this is looking across F Street. Be looking west. This is directly across A Street to the north, and this would be looking east down A Street. So I see, I think there's ample evidence to find that the property is substandard and is violation of not only our local municipal code, but also the state Health and Safety Code. And at this time, because of the lack of cooperation over the years, that's why we brought this forward and we'd like to have it determined as a nuisance, we'll add the property owner through, through Section 8.08.100 of our municipal code allows any aggrieved person to have 30 days to appeal the decision of this council in a court of law. So that he has at least another 30 days to decide what he wants to do. We have had some contact with the property owner recently. He has once again indicated that he'd like to burn the property, so we are working towards that end. But I think, I just think it's best to follow up on both.
He indicated he would like us to do that?
Correct. He'd like to do a practice burn with the fire department.
Can we get that in writing?
We do have some emails in writing. So like I said, I just want to take it on both tracks. You know, we'll go this direction, and of course, we want to work with him, and we want to get compliance. That's the ultimate goal here, so hopefully it won't happen this time.
That's good news.
I think the issue is not whether he wants to burn it, which I'm sure he probably does, because that's the cheapest way for him to get it to a certain point. But our concern is that he has to show the means and the contract by which he's going to clean it up after the burn. And that's the part that may be the stumbling block and may result in us having to do the enforcement.
Any other technical questions for staff?
Well, I just have a quick question of Eric. I see these letters dating back six years. But why didn't you include a copy of the email so we knew that he was in favor of burning?
I received some of his emails after the fact, putting the report together. So I can provide those for anybody that'd like to see. It's really one email.
It looks like you have a lot of documentation here that's gone over the years.
Correct. It's well documented. It spans other code enforcement officers in the past.
Good job. Okay, I'll open this up for public comment then, if there's no other questions from staff. From council, public comment, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Maeda. About an hour and a half ago, I actually pulled the records for that address and tried to track this guy down. I left him a message at his corporate headquarters. He works for a company called Data E-commerce Incorporated in Southern California somewhere. So I left him a message. My question basically to him was, is he aware, first of all, is he actually aware of this? And you say there's emails, that's great. Now, I'm not trying to say it's okay to have this property, just deplorable property. I think it needs to just be gone. But the problem that I saw is, this guy was pretty hard to track, track down, okay? His address, for his mailing address listed on the property records, is the address that is listed has been sold many times since just a couple of years ago. The property down in Southern California where his mailing address is listed on the records for this address. So I'm questioning just how you guys were able to track him down and how he has been notified. And how old is this guy? Is he suffering from dementia? Why is this dragging on for years?
I can address that if you'd like me to.
Yeah.
So he has been notified, any public hearing, it has to be notified by certified mail, which he signed for. And he has indicated that he received it. We have been in conversation with him. He is not that old. I would probably say he's probably in his late 40s. He's well aware of what's going on, so.
Just a kid.
Yeah.
Mayor?
And we have letters dating back from 2006.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was, really it was an issue of, he just kind of got back and forth. At one time, he was wanting to demolish it, then he thought he was going to come and rehabilitate the property. I think he's realized it's not worth fixing at this point. That's led us where we're at now.
Just to add, you know, Mr. Taylor and I had a conversation with the property owner last week. I forget which date that was. But I've had, I have had a conversation with him on the process, and the two tracks that were going on. He is interested in, you know, taking care of himself, but I informed him, you know, if he doesn't, you know, we're going to, you know, proceed with, you know, doing the lien on the property. So, you know, I've, those conversations have been, we have had that discussion.
I think you guys have been very thorough, and I appreciate that. Is there other public comment? Mr. Miles?
I want to thank the city for moving on the number of properties it's recently moved on. But I have a question, and I'm going to be very honest about this. That house is in my neighborhood, and structurally, it's no more worse than the county old planning building. But I don't see my city doing anything, what I mean approaching the county, to do something about their old dilapidated building. It's got the same kind of ivy and blackberry plants and raccoons making poop areas in the ceiling as this property does.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this topic? I'll bring it back to the council then, and we need to make a determination that the building is substandard and a public nuisance exists on the subject property and authorize the demolition of the abandoned structure. Do we have a motion? Still move?
Second.
I don't think we need to pull the vote on this.
Who made the second?
Oh, please.
Sorry?
I did.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. On to item 6B, this is Resolution 201214 to adopt the Crescent City Sanitary Sewer Management Plan.
Mayor, I have Mr. Barnes, Public Works Director, make this presentation.
Well, this is going to be a short presentation, because I brought Orrin Plucker, who is with Freshwater Environmental. And Orrin prepared these documents for us, and as you know, they're state mandated documents. And Orrin, in his company, prepared documents for most of the agencies in Humboldt County. And getting these documents right is not easy for a small agency like ours to do. So that's why we hired an outside consultant to get these documents done for us and get them through the process, because the state is excited about getting all this done. And then, so anyway, these are the documents that we need to satisfy the state. I brought Orrin to make a short presentation on both the sanitary sewer maintenance plan as well as the urban water management plan.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Orrin Plucker. I'm with Freshwater Environmental Services. And the questions I'd like to answer today is what, why the Crescent City is required to do a sanitary sewer management plan, and then what is contained within that plan. So it all, all the sanitary sewer management plan circles around these sanitary sewer overflows. When conditions arise that result in untreated wastewater coming to the surface and it creates a threat, and the goal of the plan is to reduce those. And when they do occur, so you have better operating procedures by which to clean them up and to report them. So sanitary sewer systems experience periodic failures resulting in discharges that may affect waters of the state. These are the sanitary sewer overflows. They may cause public nuisance, particularly when raw untreated wastewater is discharged to areas of high public exposure such as street, surface water, it's used for drinking, fishing, or body contact recreation. SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows, may pollute surface water or groundwater, threaten public health, adversely affect aquatic life, and impair the recreational use and aesthetic enjoyment of surface waters. So the State Water Resources Control Board requires that all, and I'm paraphrasing, but all municipalities that operate sanitary sewer systems greater than a mile in length are required to comply with the terms of the order, which means that you have to prepare a sanitary sewer management plan. So that's the why. And what goes into these plans, a sanitary sewer management plan is a system-wide operation, maintenance, and management plan that will reduce the number and frequency of SSOs. The goal of the SSMP is to provide a plan and schedule to properly manage, operate, and maintain all parts of the sanitary sewer system. This will help reduce and prevent SSOs as well as mitigate any SSOs that do occur. The sections in the SSMP include a description of the goals, a description of the organization. There's a description of the legal authority to control things like fats, oils, and greases, which are a major cause of overflows. It covers operations and maintenance programs to make sure we're constantly out there working on it to keep things properly maintained. It covers design and performance provisions. It requires an overflow emergency response plan, which is a written document that the city will follow as they respond to the overflows to reduce the hazards. It includes the sections on fats, oils, and greases, which are generated in kitchens and restaurants, and if not properly contained, end up clogging up the system, causing overflows. It includes the system evaluation and capacity assurance, monitoring measures and program modifications. There's an SSMP audit, so this document is reviewed on an annual basis and updated. It's a good learning, a good training tool. And then there's a communication plan by which it will be available for people to access that. So that's the SSMP.
Any questions from council on technical questions for this?
I have a couple of questions. Is there a time limit as to when we have to approve these?
You know, they put out an early, there was an early schedule, and it's way past of when this was to be done. A lot of communities are just now coming, you know, what I find is municipalities have a lot of things on their plate, and when they get the time and resources or identify somebody to help them with it, they move forward. But there is a, the deadlines were all passed, and I guess it still needs to be passed because it's an issue of possible enforcement when they audit your system to make sure that you have one of these in place.
So we passed the deadline? How long ago was the deadline?
They, you know, some of these started back in 2009, 2010. And so it's not unusual that, you know, I'm working with several entities that still haven't passed their SSMPs that are still working on them.
Mr.?
Plucker.
Plucker? Wouldn't it make sense that we wouldn't pass this until our sewer system plant was finished?
You know, and this is all collection. This is all the stuff, all the lines, and then this responsibility for about stops at the plant. And it's all just the piping and the collection system that communicates that stuff is where the backups then occur, that we're trying to make sure they're clean, that we're controlling the fats, oils, and greases, that we're surveying them and looking for leaks and things. And so it really stops at the treatment plant. It's all just the collection system. In fact, municipalities have satellite systems that are collection only, and they are required to do this even if they don't have a treatment plant.
The reason I asked about the timing is because I just got through this binder, and I haven't finished reading this binder, and you're asking me to make a decision. And how many pages is that, like 200, 300, 400 pages?
So I believe that Mr. Barnes did a good job in preparing us about three meetings ago on the needs and whys that we have for having to do this with the collections and the grease and whatnot from the restaurants. I think he did a good job preparing us a few meetings ago.
You know, I'd just like to say I'm getting used to all the acronyms. And for those who are in the audience, SSO is sanitary sewer overflow?
Yes, that's what you don't want.
That's what you don't want. And that in large part is what you dedicate, the maintenance of the pipelines.
Yes.
And the maintenance of the pump systems that we have. Until I read this, I had no idea that we had 17 miles of pipeline in the city. And that's an impressive maintenance effort, and I appreciate the work you put in on this.
It takes a lot, it takes a lot to keep your system going.
I've read this, and as I understand it, this is just the management plan. The city has been doing most of this work already. We're just putting it in writing for the state if they come up here and want to see, what is your plan?
Yes.
But they've been, they've been doing all this work all along.
Yes. And there's things you come up across that you could do better, you know, so you put a little emphasis. I mean, the whole goal is of the plan, if you are doing everything, then you're not getting much value out of it.
Right.
And usually, there's something that we find that's a soft spot that we want to go spend some time with, and a lot of time it's the fog issues that communities really step up their fog. You know, you can either control fog by pumping out the blockage after it occurs, or you can control it at the source by proper regulations and permits and things. So a lot of people are going back in. The weak spot is we need to do better on our fog to eliminate those kinds of overflows.
And that's what this plan is. This plan are the guidelines on what to do, what sort of things. Okay, thank you.
And in order to be in compliance, we need to pass the resolution, correct?
Well, on page...
The answer is yes.
One more thing, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. On page seven, 1.2 SSMP goals, meeting all applicable regulatory notification reporting requirements. I recall the city's supposed to report on a monthly basis sewer hookups, for example. And it didn't look to me like, excuse me, monthly reports were being done. So that doesn't seem like a huge infraction or violation. I'm just asking the question.
The question is, I'm sorry, I kind of got lost there.
Is the monthly reporting of sewer hookups one of those applicable regulatory requirements?
No, I think this is more related directly to spills, that even if you don't have a spill, you have to go in and confirm that you haven't had spills. And if you do have spills, there's a lengthy reporting process, going to all the agencies, going to all the agencies, and...
It may be that under some other provisions, the city is required to assemble that information, but that's not what this is about.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other technical questions then? Mr. Plucker, so did you have something you wanted to say? Yeah, I'll open this up with a public comment then. Thank you very much. Mr. Miles?
I have a concern, and it was real confusing Friday when I went into City Hall to read both reports, both of the plans. I'm aware of something that's been going on for years. We have our sewer lines, and then we have our water storm lines. Not all of our storm lines go into our treatment plant. So not all of our storm water is treated at the sewer treatment plant. When we have large storms, there is a lot of pollution that goes into Elk Creek, the area around the cultural center, into our harbor, and other areas around the city. A number of years ago, AmeriCorps, RHS, and the city went around... A number of years ago, AmeriCorps, RHS, and the city went around at each storm drain and put a little sticker showing a salmon. Reason why they did that, they didn't want the knuckleheads around here dumping oil down our storm drains. Well, guess what, people? We still have knuckleheads doing that. But my city allows two wrecking yards on Second Street not to put kitty litter down when they bring in wreck cars. If we're going to have these kind of plans, is my city going to have some oversight to make sure Elk Creek, our ocean isn't polluted?
So I, any other public comment?
Is there any other public comment? This is for the resolution to adopt the city sanitary sewer-
I'm just telling you that this is the resolution to adopt the Crescent City sanitary sewer management plan, and no more comments from the seats. You have to come to the mic.
Okay. Eileen Cooper. I, just scanning over the plan on page BP dash five, side B. It says to contact one of the following three agents if something happens, that they make out the report. On page RN dash one, side A, it states that the director of the Public Works is the only legally responsible official for making these reports. Therefore, I would, I think it would be more responsible if you would say on page BP dash five, side B, please contact one of these following individuals and the director of Public Works, as he is the legally responsible agent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Could you please state your name again for the record?
My name is Nicholas Maida. I think what she was getting at was the, this resolution, I'm not entirely well-versed in what's, what this particular thing is about, but if there's question as to this resolution having to be during a public hearing versus a city council meeting, there's a big reason why that question needs to be asked, and that is the three limit, three-minute limit for presenting any information from the public view, comment, opinion, things like that. If it is actually a public hearing, we have well over three minutes to do that, and it needs to be done that way. So we just need to know if this is something that has to be done with the public hearing, or if this is something that can be done legally at the city council meeting.
This is something that can be done at the city council meeting. This is not a public hearing.
Okay, that's, that was the question I think.
For, for the resolution, it's not, there's two different types of public hearings. There's one where you have to read an ordinance for the first time, and then is it forty-five days? You have to have it published, and, and then we bring it back again. Is that right?
The item is listed as a public hearing.
You have to re-publish that ordinance five days before the second hearing or the adoption hearing?
Yeah.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing this on the agenda. The agenda item says conduct a public hearing and consider, consider and approve a resolution being this resolution. So it says it's a public hearing.
Yeah, and additionally, I do audits-
It was so noticed as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pluck.
I'm sorry.
I, I do forensic analysis on web servers, and I check something called headers when documents are published. I have the actual timestamps when documents are published, and it appears that this agenda was not published outside the seventy-two hour period for today's meeting. So I just want to make sure that that is on public record in case we have to use that later.
This agenda, this agenda I received on Fri-, Thursday, Friday morning.
Actually, I'll be happy to address that.
Oh, that's the city clerk.
I prepared the agenda on Thursday, and I had delivered the agenda to all of these council members at six P.M. Thursday. Yes, and I took Friday off, so it was already at City Hall readily available for anybody that wanted to see. So for the record, it did meet the seventy-two hour deadline. You're welcome.
Is there any other public comment on this topic?
Have many concerns about this. This has been an issue ever since I moved to Delano County Crescent City. Well, the first concerns is the answer to the grand jury report. It states that there are several important issues to be decided, not the least of which was how to fund a sixty-three million dollar project. Please note the estimated cost, sixty-three million.
Okay, is this pertaining to the topic at hand?
Exactly. It certainly is. Grant funds were drawing up, and it was expected that most of the wastewater treatment plant funding would have come from a state revolving fund. Okay, so we have to fund this project. We're a community, we need a wastewater treatment plant. And to be able to avoid excessive expenses by doing something, by not doing something right the first time, whatever that might be, I think it's really important to discuss it. And that's why I asked, is this a public hearing, or is this a city council meeting? If it's a public hearing, there's a lot of people that are very intelligent in our community, and probably have something to say. The other thing about the issue of whether you put it on there Thursday or Friday, it being four hundred and fifty pages? And today's Monday. So it was a pretty big deal, this copy in four hundred and fifty pages, much less wanting to read them.
Okay, let me, let me explain what a public hearing is. If you challenge the decision of the city council in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city council at or prior to the public hearing.
And your issue, your question?
Pardon?
And you had that because, why?
Because you wanted to make a point of this being a public hearing. I'm explaining how it works.
And what did I miss? Okay, so anyway, that's, that's, so this could be sixty-three million dollars. Right now, the tax, the city's broke, right?
Connie, I think you're referring to an initial study to build the wastewater treatment plant being sixty-three million. Tonight's topic for this public hearing, which can be held by our city council during a city council meeting, is about this document to manage our inflow and outflow to and from the plant. It has, it's nothing to do with the actual building of the sixty-three or forty-two million-
I'm trying to find out. For five years, I've been watching a wastewater treatment plant be born and try to come to a working, a workable item. Through grant, it needed money, it needed talented people to build it, it needed all kinds of things. Now we're at the point where it is not working, and we need to-
It is working.
No, this is not about that.
It is working. This is just a resolution to be in compliance.
To be in compliance with the pipelines that goes to the plant.
It's just a management plan.
It's a management plan that we're required to do by the state. Has nothing to do with the wastewater plant itself. It has the pipes that go to the plant. That's the study, that, that's the plan that he did.
And they need people to make that happen, right? Employees to make that happen?
Our city employees take care of the plant, yes.
Are they certified?
Yes, they are. They are.
Your time is up.
They are certified.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. You may sit down. Ms. Morrison, you may sit down. Your time is up. Is there any other public comment on this issue? If not, I'll bring it back to the council.
I, I can say I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this plan. I read it. I had the same amount of time everyone else did, and I read through the plan pretty thoroughly. It's, it's an impressive plan. It lays out emergency activities that happen in the event of spills. It outlines the personnel needed to, to, to take care of those issues. It has a very aggressive maintenance plan to make sure that that doesn't happen very often. It, it's, it's written in such a way that almost anyone can understand it, and I appreciate the work that's gone through. I think the plan is overdue, and, and I will be voting for this resolution.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I move to approve resolution number twenty-twelve dash fourteen.
Second.
I had one quick further question. Mr. Barnes, when we talked about this a few months back, my concern was the outreach to local restaurants, and do we have a plan for that yet?
Well, I was talking to Orin this evening, and as I mentioned before, that plan is more an industrial pre-treatment plan, and we want to go in and interview all the, not only the restaurants, but the industrial users, the car washes. And, and so what we were going to do this fiscal year is identify all those that we needed to interview, and then put it in the budget next year to have Orin and one of our people go through and see what everybody's doing in the community. And like I said at that time, that's probably a fifteen thousand dollar investment to do that, but the state, the, actually, the EPA is requiring that, and we should know.
I agree.
Those are the things we're doing, and I thought just for clarification, we have, our insurance carrier is pretty concerned about this same issue, which is sanitary sewer overflows, because it can happen into buildings and different things, because if our line plugs up and the building is lower than the manholes, then the water can start going into the whatever, into the house, or... And so our crews are, we've done a lot of education, we have a lot of equipment put together, and when there's an emergency, the guys are really mobilized to deal with that emergency. And what we've seen over the last few years is an increased awareness of this problem, and the way we address it is, is much more efficient and with, with, it means more to us than it did in the past. I mean, we're, we really get on it. And when we have a waste, when we have a SSO, they, as soon as they get the thing under control, then they inform me. I let OES know, and I let the Regional Water Quality Control Board, as well as the Environmental Health Officer for this community, and those are the three I'm required to notify and, and put a report together. And whenever that happens, that's what we do. And because the state is getting, they're going to be more likely to find than they ever were in the past. Having this plan in place allows us to, that if we follow the plan, they're much less likely to find a community for a sewer overflow.
Mr. Barnes, I have a question. We had sewage overflow. What was it during the summer or fall last year?
Well, I probably have, probably three or four a year, let's say. So I'm sure I did, I mean, you know, I imagine.
In general.
I mean, and they're caused by a lot of different things, but, okay.
Okay, so here are my questions. The city lab and the contract lab analyze the samples to determine the nature and extent of the discharge. Is that done on a daily basis, you know, where spillage-
What, they wouldn't, the lab wouldn't know the extent of the discharge. What happens at different times if we feel that it is what we should be doing, and if it's something that's going on? We'll get an upstream and a downstream sample to see how it's influencing the creek, and we'll get it, we could even get a sample at the source where it's coming out to see what's going on. So we did that just recently. So that happens, but it isn't to determine the extent, and we don't usually get outside lab. I mean, our lab can handle that situation, so we get that so that the state knows what the situation is, what has happened.
So my next question is, in the last one or two spills, sewage spills that we had, did anything go into the ocean?
Um, yes, I would say yes. I don't, yep, let me back up and say, generally with the sewer overflows, we can contain it to where it doesn't get into any of the waterways. The last overflow we had was when this, when we had this OES event, when we had these big storms a few weeks ago, and our, the lift stations in the system, and it was a CSA lift stations, couldn't keep up with the flows, and we had all the resources involved. And at that case, I had to, there was an overflow into one of the ravines, and I would think with all the water going into the ocean, that some of that water would get into the ocean. It is very little in comparison with the, with the drain system as it's carrying all this runoff from, from all, from the land, so.
Okay, and so when that happens, you, someone from your staff actually posts warning signs so the public is safe from being near that sewage spill?
Well, I cannot remember a time within the last few years when we posted warning signs where this particular spill was located. Eric and I went down to try and get samples, and it was almost impossible to get into the ravine to take the samples. And so it isn't the amount of a spill that you'd post warning signs for. It isn't like you had a big pipe and it's running out into the ocean, this raw sewage. It's a little bit in a big stream, and so it really isn't one of those things that you'd post beaches or anything for. And there wouldn't be anybody at the beaches because it's raining so hard.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, in the future, I'd like for the council, in the interest of following Robert's Rules of Order, to ask all the technical questions before we open it up to public comment, and then we can make our votes. So we have a motion on the floor for-
I believe that we have the right to bring up additional questions if we need to during discussion after a second is made.
And we follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order?
I'm just asking for a little bit more cooperation. So do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No, I'm not comfortable yet. I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray? Yes, thank you. We'll move on to item six, C, Resolution 2012-15 to Adopt the City of Crescent City Urban Water Management Plan.
So we're out of the sewers now, and we're talking about drinking water. This whole urban water management plan is about your drinking water supplies, and there is the Urban Water Management Act, which directs agencies to carry out long-term resource planning responsibilities to ensure adequate water supplies are available to meet existing and future demands. The Urban Water Management Plan Act requires that urban water suppliers with three thousand or more service connections or supplying three thousand or more acre feet of water per year to prepare- to prepare an urban water management plan every five years. The Water Conservation Bill of 2009 requires that urban water suppliers, requires them to report in their urban water management plans, base daily per capita water use as a baseline, urban water use target, interim water use target, and compliance daily per capita water use. The urban water management plan is required for an urban water supplier to be eligible for a water management grant or loan administered by the DWR or the State Water Resources Control Board. The plans, the contents of the plan requires a description and evaluation of the water deliveries and uses, which, you know, where we get our water from, our supplies. It talks about efficiency of water uses. And then there's these demand management measures, which are 14 best management practices with the goal of water conservation. And so the sections of the UWP include, UWMP include plan preparation, system description, system demands, system supplies, water supply reliability and water shortage contingency planning, and these 14 demand management measures. So that's the UWMP.
Are there any technical questions for the council?
Yes, I have, I have one. Within the plan, you've outlined the recycled water opportunities. And I wasn't aware that the city proposed to use the tertiary treated recycled water to irrigate beachfront park. That sounds like a great idea. And a permit's been applied for, and it looks like maybe it was applied for in 2009. Does anyone know an anticipated date when we might be able to utilize that water for those irrigation purposes?
Mr. Barnes, we've been analyzing that and anticipating probably come back to the city council here in the next month or so.
Okay. Yeah. And the reason it's taken so long is we had to get the plant to where it was developing the water that the state could look at and say, yeah, you guys can use that water. So we're at that point, but it isn't an easy thing to get permitted. It isn't as easy as it should be to get permitted.
And one of the things we also looked at, Mr. Holly, is actually taking that recycled water and piping it over to the swimming pool and using it to heat the boilers and also to heat the cultural center.
And that's all part of that same permit?
I don't think, I think it's, I think we're doing it in phases.
And we'll give you more detail as we get closer to it.
Yeah, you know, the other question, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll look forward to that report. The only other thing is, it was, it's quite exciting that we might be able to, at some point, return recycled water to the consumers. And I saw that maybe by 2020, that could happen. That seems, that seems like real forward thinking. And I'm anxious to see how that moves forward.
We're anxious to let you try it first.
I'll let you know.
We actually had Mr. Barnes bring some purified water from the plant and was willing to drink it, I think.
One of the questions that you might ask is, why are we doing a 2010 report in 2012? And these are done every five years. We had one in 2005, there's one in 2010. But the state regulations on how to do this plan wasn't out until 2011. And then it takes a while to put all this stuff together. So that's why it's in 2012, and we're going to have one in 2015. And by that time, the state may change all the rules again. You never know. So, and it's kind of interesting that Crescent City really isn't in, our source is a real good source. Conservation isn't as big an issue for us as it is in a lot of these other watersheds where all the water is used up and maybe more than the supply can take care of. So we're in an enviable position because of the quality and quantity of our water here. So this plan makes less sense for us than it does for a lot of other places.
Any other technical questions?
I'm just, after having heard that, and I don't think we have a water shortage problem anywhere in our near or long-term future. I was just looking at this graph and wondering why we went in 1994 from 900 million gallons of water down to about 700 million gallons of water in 2009.
Paige, are you on?
I think there's, I think there's probably less industry now than there was then. But also, we as a department have been after water pipe leaks. And I think there's also a movement to reduce the amount of water used in households by various fixtures and the changes that have been happening, which is kind of the whole idea of this, which is water conservation. And the problem is, as Orin indicated, water rights, there's no more water as far as what's going down the rivers is what there's probably going to be going down the rivers. And since most of it's used up, water rights, they're not increasing water rights, although there's more and more houses being built and more things going on that need water. So this plan is to manage that resource. And it's managed by conservation and recycling and those sorts of things, because there's no more of it than we're, we actually have. Like I said, we probably have more than we need, but most locations don't.
Thank you. Any other technical questions?
Yes, just one more, Mr. Barnes. And forgive me if I'm being redundant. I just don't remember if I asked you this before. But when our MBR, our system is through filtering our water, does it take out the fluoride?
Yes. Yeah, you don't, I don't think there's any, I should ask Eric that question. I, I'm not exactly sure whether it does or not, because the MBR is a pretty fine filter, but I will say fluoride is a pretty small particle, too. So I'm not exactly sure about that. You know, can you answer that, Eric? I guess we don't know the answer to that question. If that, the state isn't, doesn't care whether it goes in the ocean, I don't think. I mean, that's not one of the constituents we test for.
Thank you. Any other technical questions from the council? If not, I'll open this up for public comment. Mr. Maeda?
I just find this hilarious. Again, my name is Nicholas Maeda. We're putting fluoride in the water. We're talking about potentially recycling the water. And we already know that we can't get a lot of this stuff out of the water. If there's no problem with, in the state's eye for just taking this water and put it back out in the ocean, why would we put ourselves in a position that we're going to spend so much money to reprocess this water when we already have trouble with our testing? We have, from my understanding, we have an interim tester who's a grade one when we're required to have a grade three. I don't, I don't understand. I don't understand why would we take this water and put it back? Even just, I mean, we, yeah, like she, Donna Westfall said, is the water running out from our rivers? I mean, we had high flood stages here recently. I mean, I don't know.
If you have technical questions like that, you're welcome to go to City Hall and have those questions answered.
I will, thank you.
Mr. Miles?
I want to thank the gentleman that did this for us because I think he presented a well-documented plan, especially his best practices. But I have a concern as a city resident, because I'm really not a county resident. I'm aware that my city has not done a few things in a number of years because it really hasn't had the finances. And recently, I was told by Eric Weir that maybe this year or next year, we could do some things. I'm aware that the tower, water tower out on Wonder Stump needs some major maintenance. I'm aware that our brand-new water tank on Washington needs some maintenance. And I'm aware, if you go over to Harold Street, the little kids throw rocks at the tower, and it needs painted before it starts rusting inside. But we can't find the money to do some of these projects. So I would hope to follow up on the best practices that at budget time, you find some money to make sure the best practices that this gentleman has recommended be followed.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this topic? Not all closed, public comment, and bring it back to the council.
I move to approve resolution 2012-15, adopting the Crescent City Urban Water Management Plan.
I'll second that motion.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you.
And now to a very, what I would call fun topic, a presentation by the Friday Night Live group regarding substance abuse and distracted driving.
Hello, this is on. Okay, my name is Brooke Hill, and this is Tina Tao. And we're part of the Delnort County Friday Night Live Youth Council. And we advocate for positive change in the community. Hello, so the reason we are here today is to present to you guys our Photo Voice project in order to gain support for a social host ordinance. Our first steps to achieving this is through a Photo Voice project where we use photos to capture opinions of concerned community members of a prominent growing issue. Okay, sorry. Okay. A social host ordinance is what we would like to establish. And what that is, it is designed to hold adults accountable for hosting events and providing alcohol to minors. For the interview process, we spoke to several key people in the community, like Donna Olson, Chief Black, and Catherine Murray. We asked questions concerning underage drug and alcohol use in our community.
After many interviews, we obtained much information, statistics, and opinions about the drug and alcohol abuse within the community. And without a doubt, drug and alcohol abuse within the community is a major problem.
So we had a sorting game, which is an activity that we did at one of our meetings. And we were separated into different groups and given the same directions, but we came out with different outcomes. And the purpose of this activity was to show us that everyone has a different perspective on the same issue.
Hi, my name is Whitney Hill. And this picture is capturing the unfortunate too-frequent use of alcohol while operating a motor vehicle. When a person drinks, their judgment and reflexes become impaired, and their common mistake is believing that they are actually capable of driving safely. This is becoming more and more common among young people, especially around prom time.
Hello, my name is Holly Merrifield. This picture was taken to highlight the controversial issue of parents providing alcohol to minors. Many parents believe that it is not illegal to provide alcohol to their children in their own home, but it is. It is contributing to the delinquency of a minor. One solution to this problem would be to implement a social host ordinance, which would provide civil consequences for parents caught providing alcohol to their underage children.
As the picture, the picture above depicts about how easily prescription drugs are obtained by youth within the community. A recent survey has indicated that 45% of prescription drugs are found within unlocked cabinets within the household. And 25% of the prescription drugs are found within kitchen cabinets. The, the community has expressed its concern for the abuse of the prescription drugs by, with the following statement, quote, "Prescription drugs are seen as safe, safer than any other drug, accessible, and easily stolen from the elderly," unquote.
And we decided to use this photo as the bag is a Skittles candy bag. It is relatable to a game that is played at house parties where teens will bring in their own prescription drugs, toss them into a bowl, and pull them out and eat them like their bag of Skittles.
Hello, my name is Eileen Rivera. And this picture illustrates the consequences and results of drinking. In this particular picture, a minor is shown. The brain does not finish developing until the age of 25. And underage drinking can damage the brain for life. Not only does it hurt the brain, but it hurts our pocketbooks. Whenever a minor has to go to juvenile hall, they are required to be sober. The majority of offenders are in juvenile hall as a result of underage drinking. So when the youth have to be sobered up, they are sent to the hospital, which costs a minimum of $1,000. Guess who pays for that? The taxpayers. The scary part is that we see underage drinking beginning as young as 11 years old. But the prime age where the majority of alcohol abuse is seen is at ages 16 through 18. We need to raise awareness, educate parents, and change social norms for the sake of community, for the sake of the community and human well-being. This picture is capturing the dangers of drinking to the excess. In Delnort County alone, there are 50 hospital admissions a year of underage persons related to severe drinking that has led to alcohol poisoning. Each case results in as much as $75,000 in expenses per patient. 40% of these patients will repeat this experience at least once in their life.
As another presentation to our Photo Voice, instead of reenacting a scene, I decided to go out to our community. I chose our skate park as a place where I would find drug abuse. And luckily, I did. Here we see a minor using cigarettes. And what isn't shown is him sharing his cigarettes with fellow teens. And as an example of drug abuse, this could easily lead to other gateway drugs. And the irony of the situation is, this is right next to our sheriff's department.
Hello again. This picture represents people who abuse prescription drugs. Every day, we see the consequences that prescription drugs have in our community. Whether it leads to addiction, domestic violence, or criminal activity, it is a growing concern. It can be easier to obtain as simple as opening up the medicine cabinet. Accessibility to prescription drugs is much easier than it should be. A myriad of drugs are being abused, such as Vicodin, OxyContin, cough syrup, and Percodin. Many parents don't believe that their, in quote, innocent, end quote, children would abuse prescription drugs. Awareness needs to be raised on prescription drug abuse and parents need to be educated.
As we all know, underage drinking is a significant issue in our community. Drug driving is only one part of this. Other consequences are violence, injury, unwanted pregnancy, and domestic violence and health problems. We promote that a social host ordinance be passed to help reduce underage drinking in our community. As part of our efforts to reduce underage drinking, we are organizing a town hall meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, five-thirty to seven-thirty at Delnort High School. We would like to invite you to come. Thank you for your time and attention.
What time was that?
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
At the high school. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the students or your staff? Nancy? Does council have any questions?
I just have a comment. I appreciate the effort you put in to your presentation and your dedication to see that especially kids aren't hurt. This is near and dear to me because I was a pallbearer three times before I got out of high school. And it's still emotional for me and thank you.
I have a comment. I'm just surprised, and maybe Police Chief, you can answer this, but don't we have anything in place already that if parents serve alcohol to underage children, that they would be responsible and a violation takes place?
Yes, there are laws pertaining to this.
Okay.
But we do not have a social ordinance, which is what the students here are asking us to do.
And we had spoken with the district attorney, the district attorney, and he had mentioned that there are laws pertaining to this issue, but there are no specific laws as specific as...
A social host ordinance.
And I can't recall exactly what exactly.
We also have, fortunately, Chief Black has done some public announcements on the radio regarding this as well, so we've had help from law enforcement on that side, but if the council's in agreement, I'd like to direct staff to draft a public host ordinance for us to consider.
I had a couple of questions. I was gonna ask you if you've made this presentation to your fellow students at the high school?
No.
No, we have not yet.
Do you plan to?
Yes, at the town hall meeting that we are hosting.
So do you think the high school would actually allow you to do it at a, like a, you know, where you have a captive audience at an assembly or something because I I'm learning that most kids won't go to an event after hours.
As a leadership student, I do believe that we would be able to host and present this presentation to a crowd possibly at a pep rally.
And, so I have several questions, I'm sorry, but how do you plan to invite parents to the town hall meeting so that you can get a large amount of input?
Well, we have it already in Facebook and we are sending letters to all the parents of all the high school students and sunset to invite them.
And I think Friday Night Live does a great outreach with other students as well already.
Yeah, and also we talked to some teachers and they are offering extra credit for the students to come. Unfortunately, we cannot ask to have extra credit for bringing the parents. We would like that, but it's not working yet.
And maybe some press releases as well?
Yes, we are trying, but it's not...
Driving moms in the morning. And then my other question or comment was that I actually sat through one of these interviews as well, I think with Ms. Rivera. And I was just, I was trying to talk to her openly and honestly as a parent. And my concern at that time, and they were, I think I was the first interview.
Yes, you were.
So, they weren't quite sure yet what the outcome would be, so I'm curious if you found more research about, because my concern was as a parent, I would, I would want to be held responsible if I gave my child alcohol. But if my child chose to partake of alcohol behind my back, let's say if I was at a council meeting and he was home, where does that fine line, you know, of responsibility lie in a legal issue?
I think the social host ordinance is when there's a big party and parents supply alcohol to a group of children. I think that's what you're asking, right? So I don't know if that can really address Councilmember Shalong's question, but maybe Chief Black could.
As you know, we do not have a local ordinance to combat this problem and it definitely is a problem. The issue at hand here is not just what the penal code says that individuals cannot, we need one more locally to enforce the problems that this community is faced with. So therefore, that could encompass anything between a kegger party with a loud party. It could be numerous type of violations that can also be placed in this social type of ordinance that could be drafted. So it's gonna help you on several levels.
My question though is, who's liable if a parent is away from the home and there are kids that are drinking?
Well, it's gonna be the person that's in charge of the house. And if it's a juvenile, then it's gonna come back on the parents. And that can be from a fine and verbal warning or even if it's a constant problem that we get called there. It can be handled, that is, as far as them being the ones that are gonna be held responsible. Not to mention the fines that will be assessed to it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is the council in agreement to have a social ordinance, host ordinance brought back before the council?
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to see their town hall completed and more outreach to the parents and then education before it actually gets passed.
Are you doing this presentation to the board of supervisors as well?
We hope so.
Okay, alright. Any other questions or comments for the...
I just wanna thank you all for doing this. I think it means a whole lot when you're the ones, you're the kids, and you're trying to get the message across to the other kids as well as the parents. I want to thank you for considering this and putting your time and energy into it.
And I have one more thing to add to the students' presentation. My name is Lynda Tabor. I am Nancy Rivera's assistant through the Friday Night Live programs. And we have made a binder that has sample ordinances throughout California as well as other states that are available. Our students, we would not be the ones to initially, to write the ordinance. We would need your guys' help with that. And there is only one binder, but we are willing to make more if you would all like to have access to this. Inside of here, there are also copies of this one-page front back that is from Contra Costa County and about their social host ordinance and it's just a little bit of information to help you guys out and to more, to better understand that maybe something the students didn't explain well enough or that wasn't brought up. So it's something that's kind of just right there, all the Q and A. And there are enough copies of this in the front of the binder.
I think one of the things that Ms. Rivera and I also discussed was how other communities pass this ordinance and what kind of outreach they did and what some of the feedback was from those communities. So were you able to research any of that?
Yes, we did.
Is that in the book? Okay, great.
Yeah, and the one that I got the most contact was actually Napa, which, you know, surprisingly with all the wine they have, they just passed a social host ordinance some months ago.
Great. Good job, kids.
Thank you very much.
And also, you know, if we need help, we can get technical assistance through the Friday Night Live system. They say that they have a person that is expert on this subject and they are willing to come up here and help us out.
Great. Thank you for your leadership, Nancy and Melody. Thank you, kids. It's nice to have you here. Item number eight, or should we...
On this item, what I'd like to ask Madam Mayor is to, you know, if we could have staff just do some more research on this ordinance and report back to the council, you know, within the next month.
I know that Mr. Larson had a death in his family and that's probably why he's not here.
That's fine. On the Friday Night Live, yeah, that's fine.
If that'd be okay for the council.
Oh, I was talking about item number eight. Sorry.
Oh, I apologize. I was on this last item. Just, you know, requesting that, you know, staff do some more research on this item or on this request and report back to the council.
Yeah, and I'd like to see what kind of further information comes out from their town hall meeting as well.
That'd be good. Thank you.
So now, on to my, should be table item number eight since Mr. Larson is not here.
Ms. Patch, do you know Mr. Larson at all?
Mr. Larson said that he would be here this evening.
But he's had a death in his family. I know that Councilmember Shalong and I have attended many MLPA meetings and...
Well, then I'd recommend is maybe, you know, we postpone it to the next meeting?
I think it's, I think it's important that we approve it tonight if we, if the council chooses to approve it because of the public hearings that are happening for, on the subject.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
I don't know how anybody else feels, but...
And I forgot to open up public comment for the Friday Night Live kids. Are there any public comments from the last presentation? Seeing none, okay. Then if council's okay with item number eight?
I would prefer to table it.
What did she say?
I'm in favor of moving forward, but if no one else wants to...
I'm having trouble with it. I haven't done the kind of homework that you folks have done on this and I don't feel comfortable submitting a vote at this time.
And actually, actually for myself, I was wanting to hear from Mr. Larson tonight. I've been following this and I understand our local tribes are not exactly for this or if they've mitigated that yet. I'm not ready to vote on it tonight.
The local tribes have been very involved in this process, very involved. And this letter is basically, there is a local stakeholders group that consisted of everybody that could be for or against the MLPA that worked together to put forward kind of a negotiated plan for our region. And the state kind of said, eh, we're gonna do what we want and not listen to that stakeholders group. And Zack has just been continuing to try to change their mind and promote the fact that the local people here in our region know our area and we, you know, we had everybody at the table and I'm talking about, you know,
Everybody.
Hundreds of people, tons of different agencies, left and right, in the middle. And they all worked together to come up with a negotiated plan and he's just trying to continue to move that plan forward.
And they have mitigated the issues with the tribes because some of their sacred, traditional hunting grounds were excluded in the MLPA and they've mitigated that so that the tribes have access to their traditional...
Their fishing grounds?
Well, for seaweed and all that type of thing too. They, I know that they have...
And I just know that the North Coast hearings are happening and I think that's why he's trying to get another... We've actually already supported this as a council. I think this is just one more last-ditch effort to continue to get the state to listen to us. That's just my little executive summary. This has been going on for a couple of years.
Yeah, Kelly and I have been to, I don't know how many meetings, but we've been to a lot of them at the very, very, very beginning, so, and we've made a lot of progress, so. If you would rather table it, I'm in favor of passing it, but if others are not, then we will table it.
I'm just gonna make a motion and it can dive for a lack of seconds, but I'm gonna move that we support the request for a letter for, from Zack to support the actions taken by this North Coast region group for the MLPA.
I'll second that motion. Could you please pull the vote?
We have discussion just a little bit. Before we do vote, I would be in favor of tabling the matter. I'd like it to come back. It's not that I have an opposition here, but I keep reading these paragraphs over and over again and they're just not quite gelling for me. And so I'm, I am going to be voting no at this time, not because I have opposition, but because I don't think I have enough information.
Is there a public comment on this issue? Mr. Miles?
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, before you take public comment, I just want to remind the council that when you speak really closely to the microphone, it crackles for everybody listening, so make sure that when you're utilizing the microphone, everyone not to be so close. Okay, thank you.
I have followed this issue mainly at the meetings of the Harbor Commission. And what is happening and why I would hope you would take a vote on this tonight is the timeline for both NOAA and the State Fish and Game Commission to formalize this plan is coming to a conclusion. I would hope that you guys would send a letter mainly because I believe creating a sanctuary that extends from the Mendocino coast to the border of Oregon and the man hours that are stakeholder groups mainly made up of a number of commercial fishermen who had a lot of interest and had the most to lose. Everybody came to an agreement. As we know, our fishermen are hurting. Recently, I was down south and the Monterey Sanctuary, which was, I think, the third established after the while the islands outside of San Francisco, has actually helped the recovery of fisheries. If the same thing could happen here, I think it would help create livelihoods and jobs. And that's what it's all about.
And I would just like to add that Mr. Larson has been working tirelessly with all the counties that benefit in the MLPA from Mendocino, Delnort, and Delnort.
Also, just another, just clarification. So the state has taken the North Coast Stakeholders Group's recommendation and made it the preferred alternative. But then they also go on to include other options which, on a map, make the boundary line changes look possibly somewhat trivial and in real life, they're not. And the reason that the North Coast Group's preferred alternative is so important is because we actually take the boundaries into consideration that will affect our fishermen and those that extract other things from the sea, like seaweed. But we also made it clear that their plan for this whole process did not consider the economic impacts on small communities such as ours. And so that's why he continues to reference, you know, having the Department of Fish and Game revision and kind of look at this one more time and to understand how it affects our community if they, if they go with what they think is the option to use.
Do we know what our state assemblyman, has he asked Fish and Game to adopt our plan? I don't know either.
I know that everybody from A to Z has been involved in this, so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Could you please pull the vote?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westphal?
No, I'm in favor of tabling this.
Councilmember Hawley?
I feel the same way. My vote is no.
Council, excuse me, Mayor Protemania?
No.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, motion fails. We'll continue it till the next... Motion fails, we'll continue it to the next meeting and move on to item number nine, which is an ordinance of the city of Crescent City adding Chapter eighteen, eight point eighteen noise regulations to Title Eight Health and Safety of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Briefly, the motion to table is really indefinite. There was nothing said about bringing it back at the next meeting.
There wasn't a motion to table it. My motion was to pass to support the letter.
Okay, very good.
However, if you'd like, I'd like to see it back in two weeks. I don't know if the rest of the...
Give direction to get, bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah, direction, basically, bring it back next, in two weeks.
It might be too late, though, so I would check with Zach.
I'll do so. Thank you.
So on to item nine.
Reintroducing the much anticipated noise ordinance. This was initially brought to the council at the April 2nd, 2012 meeting, which was the last meeting. At that time, council asked for some modifications. More specifically, we eliminated the section titled Amplified Sound that was, would require anybody who liked, or any businesses who wish to have amplified sound, we needed to come get the use permit first. Secondly, the other thing that came out of the meeting, there was a question about the hours of operation for Solid Waste Authority. I went back and checked and just kind of double verified.
There was like an hour difference, I think?
No, actually, it falls right in line, actually. There's, it's attached to the back of the report.
Yes, I know.
They have six, they allow six to six, right, so ours allows a little more time. Apparently, they also have something in there that can allow them to go from 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM if they choose to, but they have done so.
So my question is, why are we reintroducing instead of doing a second reading?
Just because the modifications that were asked for, so I just wanted to give everybody a chance to go over it again and...
So did we have to publish it twice?
Allow Mr. Black to answer.
This has to be published prior to adoption, not, not published in full, but a summary of it, five days prior to adoption. And by reintroducing this, we set up the adoption to occur three weeks from now, and we will publish in that interim period.
But we didn't publish already?
I think we did publish, but it was after the publication. It was kind of decided between me and Eric that we would try to cure any possible objection to the ordinance that resulted from the big change that was made on the introduction. And this gives the public a chance to see it much closer to its final form. I think that going ahead and adopting today might have been legally justified, but I also think that, I just think this kind of makes it bulletproof from a procedural point of view.
Well, I just thought we had to do a second reading before we could adopt it.
Yeah, second reading will have to occur at your next regular meeting. Yeah, we do.
So we'll read it three times?
Yes, basically. That is true.
You know, I see attachment number two regarding the, mostly the times, the franchise collection stuff. And I, and I understand that why that's included, I guess, is because the noise ordinance under K and L on page five had to do with refuse collection vehicles, movement, and recycling vehicles. Is there a way to insert these changed times into that, into K and L? Or is it better to have the attachment? I guess that's why I'm asking.
Detachment was just for clarification, because the question was brought up.
Yeah, those questions were brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, I questioned whether or not our hours would coincide with the solid waste hours they set forth for recology. And so what he's showing is that recology's hours fall within our range to operate.
So attachment two is actually an excerpt from the recology franchise agreement? It's not part of the ordinance?
When I look at K and L on page five, it doesn't match up with the times for hours of collections?
Correct. Our ordinance is actually a little more lenient, so it allows for an extra hour of operation.
Residential and business?
Okay.
Right, so the six to six residential falls in line, and we allow an extra hour if it's commercial.
All right, thank you.
I thought that initially, too.
I just thought it...
And then I had to read it twice.
Okay.
Eric? Yeah, how far away should we be from this? I've really been slammed on this by the public, and I had to discuss it with Bob Black and Gene Palazzo on a number of issues, and one I forgot to bring up between them. And I want you to know what the process is and how I got there. One is animal control. We have a contract with the county for animal control. And so it looked like they should be doing a lot of things that they can't because they only have one person to do it, okay? And so I understand that there's a gap there, okay? There was a gap in my understanding where disturbing the peace ends and the noise ordinance begins. I don't thoroughly understand that. But the other thing I was slammed on, and these are people in the construction trades, is, and this even happened to us, we lost a roof a couple of years ago in those seventy, eighty mile per hour winds. And so, you know, those, and I know how you are, you're very flexible and easygoing to work with. But you're not always gonna be in this position, and so it would be nice to know that there are some exemptions for emergencies like that.
There is an exemption in here for emergency repairs.
Okay.
So it'd be under F, so...
Page six, page six, item F.
Right, eight point one, eight point six oh, exemptions from chapter.
Right.
So if you look at F...
Okay.
So basically...
Well, here we have for which a permit has been granted by the city based upon an emergency.
So one, it says, "A case of urgent necessity in the interest of public health and safety, such permit may be granted for a period not to exceed five days with, while an emergency continues, or a determination by the city that the public health and safety will not be impaired that no loss or inconvenience would result to the party in interest." So yeah, if your roof blows off, that's obviously a health and safety issue, and we're gonna allow you to take care of it.
Okay.
Mr. Miles? Oh, go ahead. Mr. McKenna? On this topic only? Yes. It's on the noise ordinance. That's fine. Could you state your name for the record?
My name's Richard McKinnon, and I've been resident of Crescent City for many years. Seems like we went over this a couple of years ago. There was a big hurrah-rah in the triplicate and so forth. People were complaining about the bells on the harbor buoys and all kinds of stuff. And eventually, it just went away. It sort of disappeared, and now suddenly, boom, it's here again. The only thing I'm concerned about is church bells. I think we should have an exemption for church bells.
There are already exempts. We talked about this a couple of years ago. The reason we didn't have...
I don't see it in, I don't...
Because it's during the time that you can have the bells. This is talking between 6:00 AM. The church bell rings, what, at 10 o'clock in the morning? At least mine do at St. Joseph's.
They could ring at midnight on Christmas.
Well, that would be maybe an exception at midnight.
We have a seven o'clock mass.
That's fine.
7:00 PM sometime.
It's always in, that's in there. We talked about this with Father Apperson two years ago when I was on the planning commission, and I assured him this doesn't interfere with that.
I don't see any exemption in here.
We don't write every exemption. What I'm saying is, it's already complies with the, with the rules. Now, for midnight mass, we'll, I'm sure we'll make an exemption for that.
Well, they haven't had a midnight mass for a part of a year now.
Right, it's usually at five o'clock.
Yeah, they have it at 10:00.
I guess the best way I could address that, too, the original noise ordinance that came, I believe, had decibel levels. It was written, it was drafted differently, so this, this ordinance is drafted what's reasonable. So I mean, a real person is gonna assume if you can have, Sunday, it's not unreasonable to have church bells.
We have a lot of unreasonable people in this town, and...
But they're not the ones that force the ordinance.
I think that it'd be helpful to have an exemption, just saying, make it simple. Item zero, church bells, period. And that way, there would be no hurrah-rah about what time and so on and so forth. But that's just my, I just, I've done my duty here. I'm done. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
I don't have a problem with adding that, if it makes the church feel better. I don't, I said I don't have a problem adding that.
Church bells are exempt. Can we make an amendment to that without having to read it again?
I don't see a problem with that.
Our second reading, our third reading?
You can always make amendments. I guess, the only thing I caution, you know, if you're saying they're completely exempt, I mean, what if there's, there is some instance, somebody maliciously gets a church bell or something happens? I mean, I don't know. It's hard to cover these things completely and entirely. That's the problem. And that's why it's what's reasonable.
Could you award it, like church bells during a church activity? Or church time, or...
I think where, you know, the intent of the ordinance is, you know, not to...
Is nuisance.
It's nuisance. You know, the church is having a midnight mass and the bell's ringing. We're not going to, you know, go out and, you know, cite the church for ringing the bells at midnight. I mean, that's kind of the...
Yeah, I don't think we would either.
It's not the intent of the ordinance, so...
Chief, did you have something you wanted to add?
The spirit of the ordinance is gonna be complaint-driven. You're not gonna receive the complaints on midnight mass one time a year. I would certainly would guard you in making this too comprehensive in regards to specific things such as a bell. Why don't we do an ordinance and have an exception for the tsunami siren? Why don't we, I mean, we, there are so many other things that we're not even thinking about right now that really honestly is not gonna be really important as far as that's concerned. But this is the most comprehensive ordinance I have ever read. I think it is very, it's very compatible pertaining to the city needs and allowing the citizens to understand in clear text what is expected, because each and every violation states the times that are in there as well. So just be careful on placing all exceptions and keep on adding this on, because we can find ourselves in very muddied waters, and I would really guard you not, not to go any further into that for that specific reason.
I'm thrilled that we have it. We were working on this when I was on the planning commission, so...
This is very exciting because it is needed. As I mentioned at the last city council meeting, we are responding to half of these calls all the time. And you just saw what your youth just said to you about in other ordinances that are really pertinent to the quality of life in the city. The dogs is another issue. There's no doubt, I understand what you're saying. But come on over to my office at 10 o'clock in the morning, when you're trying to interview people and the dogs are howling and barking, I'm not gonna sit a siren on in the back of my lot from a police car and just wait for the dogs to howl and bark and then go over there and write them a ticket. I mean, so the thing is, is that there's a lot of these issues that really honestly, it's common sense approach. We're asking for cooperation, that's all we are. And we're not gonna have you sit in the rain while your roof is being repaired or not repaired because it's past the times. That's not the case. The point is, is that I think you do have enough exceptions into the rule here and into the ordinance, and I think it's a, it's a good ordinance the way it's written right now. A lot of research did go into it, and I applaud the city for doing so.
Doug?
Yes?
Isn't disturbing the police also complaint-driven?
Disturbing the police?
The peace, I'm sorry.
You can't disturb the police. The courts have said that.
They're already disturbed.
That's why, that's really, that's why...
I don't know how you disturb your...
That's why we cannot write a ticket if there is a loud party or things like that. That's why we need people to sign a complaint, because the courts have said the police cannot be disturbed. So therefore, that's one reason why we...
They have to go through psychological interviews for that.
Well, this is the reason why we need the ordinance, is because if an officer's driving down the street and there's a loud music coming from inside the house, the officer can take action on it, because it's against the local ordinance. And so therefore, we don't need somebody to decide it, but chances are, the officer isn't gonna decide it. Gonna tell them to turn it down, go inside, and, you know, don't disturb the neighbors. And I think what we're trying to enhance here is neighborly suggestions in wanting to make this a quality of life issue, and that's exactly what this is, this entails.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Richard?
I hope this city council would rethink something. The last time you brought this up, you decided that businesses who violate the noise ordinance couldn't be fined. And I think that's a mistake. And I want to tell you why, and I want to be nice about it. There is a mobile home park and apartment complexes out by shooters. I know somebody that's a senior citizen that lives out there. There are times when the music from shooters is so wild that it vibrates through her trailer. There's been times, and it's kind of changed because of the hours that one business does downtown on a cold winter night, when she was playing music on Fridays, I could hear her. There's been times when there's been events at our cultural center that's got a little rowdy, and my police department has had to respond to calls there. In my neighborhood, there's occasionally events at the Veterans Hall. Not by the veterans, but the hall is rented out. I'm aware that my police department has responded to calls there because of the music and some fights and other things. Recently, unfortunately, there was a stabbing at an establishment.
Your time's up, Richard.
Was that caused by loud music?
Any other public comment on this?
Mayor, can I say, just to clarify, I don't believe anybody said that businesses are exempt from this ordinance. Businesses were not required to file in advance for a conditional use permit in order to have noisy events like live music.
Or amplified sound.
Amplified sound, but if they, if they control it, if they buffer it, if they keep it at low enough levels, then they don't have to come in for a special permit. They can regulate themselves. But if they violate this ordinance, they're liable like any other person.
I'd like to add, and I know there's always trepidation when passing these things, but just keep in mind, ordinances can always be amended, too. So you can always add or subtract as we go along.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Are closed public comments?
Yes, one more thing. We've been talking to musicians who are offering to give... Yes, one more thing. We've been talking to musicians who are offering to give free concerts over at Front Street Park, and this would be during daylight hours or dusk. And, you know, the surf apartment is right across the street. So, I can already anticipate there are going to be complaints.
There's exemptions for special, especially banned permits.
You have to get a permit.
Well, the park is open until dusk anyway, and you expect noise to happen at the park. So, if they called and complained about that, the park is open.
Okay.
It's acceptable noise. And...
I guess so.
Actually, it should be acceptable music, not noise.
You just have to get a permit.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll bring this back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval of the ordinance, adding chapters 8.18, noise regulations to Title VIII of the Health and Safety of Crescent City Municipal Code, ordinance number 768.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yeah.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. On to new business. We just have item number 10, give direction to the city attorney's office regarding a conflict with respect to harbor annexation. Take action as necessary and appropriate.
I would just say, by way of introduction, that I think the alternatives are fairly clear and that your council should take such action as you feel comfortable with. I will accept your decision, whatever you wish to do.
Comments or clarifications from the council?
No, I think Bob did what he was supposed to do legally, and that's to educate us that there is a possible conflict or a conflict. And it's our choice to decide to have him represent our side if we'd like.
Yeah, and, and he does have his license to consider, so I believe that he would stay within his bounds.
And he's done this for us before.
Yeah. Is there a public comment on this? Seeing done, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I think that the discussions between the city and the county and the harbor are, you know, hopefully going to result in a better direction or a direction that everybody deems isn't feasible at the time. I don't think it's going to be a harmful discovery. And I am very confident in Mr. Black. So, I would recommend...
Number one?
Yeah.
Waive the conflict.
To waive the conflict.
Second. I'll second that.
Oh, wait a second. You seconded that? Was that a motion, or are you just discussing?
You can discuss after the second.
Would you like to make a comment, Ms. Westfall?
Yes, I would, because I prefer to decline to waive the conflict and choose number three to direct staff to solicit proposals for other outside counsel based on input I've gotten from the public.
Okay, we have a second motion on the floor. Do we have a second? On that second motion? I already asked for public comment. Since the second motion had no second, it dies, and we'll go back to the first motion to determine to waive the conflict of interest described below and allow the city attorney's office to represent the city with respect to the possibility of annexation of the harbor to the city and authorize the mayor to execute the attached waiver. So, could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries four to one.
And I would just note, this is on the harbor commission agenda because they have to waive the conflict also, even though I won't be representing them.
And we're on to item 11. Ms. Westfall, did you have a comment since you pointed this on the agenda?
Actually, Nick Maeda presented a PowerPoint presentation that was sent to the city. You have that, Robin? However, I don't see Nick here. Did he go homesick? Is there someone else ready to read this?
How long is the power presentation?
Like, three minutes?
Yes, with all due respect, because this is a member of the public that wanted to present this, it would be subject to the public comment period, so it would only be three minutes allowed. And they would have to approach the podium and be timed.
Council, what's your pleasure? Would you rather delay this or allow...
Well, I, I've, I was thinking about this today. And I understand that the, the, I'm not sure what the group is called, but the group that's seeking to have fluoride removed from the water again. I believe that they've gotten through a certain number of rounds to have this issue put on the ballot, which if indeed it were to move forward, it would be a moot point anyway, because we'd be removing fluoride from the water. So, I think it could easily be tabled until we know what's going to happen with the fluoride in the water. And so, I would, I would just move to table it.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second on the table?
I'll second it, assuming additional discussion's going to take place.
All right, public comment, Richard.
I think this is another example of the adramachween putting a smokescreen up. And I want to tell you why I believe this. The voters, two, four years ago, passed Measure A. Until the voters vote down Measure A, the city is required, under the law, to put fluorine in our water.
Oh, fluorine.
Yeah. You know, and this is why I think it's a mute, a mute issue. Because groups have the right to put initiatives on the ballot.
Well, Richard, this is, this is being tabled, so...
No, I think, I think it should never be brought up again.
That's what we're voting on, so...
Because...
If you would let us vote, then you'd be happy.
Okay, let me finish. I still got a few minutes. Until the voters vote to take fluoride out of our water or have it remain, we have an ordinance or...
We're aware of that.
So, what is happening, and this is what upsets me, Donna Westfall, every time she brings up this issue, is actually wasting valuable time at my city council meetings.
Thank you, Richard.
And you censored her once for this.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Could you please pull the vote?
Is there any more discussion?
Amen.
There are more comments?
I think she has it.
Get up. Another public comment? Go ahead.
Which, Madam Mayor, which individual are you calling to the podium?
The one that's closest.
I have epilepsy. And my name is Jenny Allen. And I came here especially for the fluoride. I think we need to lower it or remove it from our water.
We did lower it.
We need to lower it even more. I have had epilepsy since I was seven years old. That is 40 years of taking pills and 40 years of seizures. I moved out to Fort Dick and stayed there with a friend for a couple of months. My seizures decreased so much, my doctor reduced my medication in half. My mother now has to go to the hospital for surgery. Someone has to take care of her. I moved back into the city, or the county limits, it's on city water. There is fluoride in the water. I started having seizures. I had to go to the doctor. My doctor said, drink bottled water, take short showers. The fluoride is a neurotoxin. I have a neurological problem with my epilepsy. Now, this is not fair that I should have to buy water to bathe in, to drink, when it's right there. Why are you guys poisoning me? This is what it comes down to.
This is up to the voters, not us.
Well, why wasn't it lowered further? There is still enough in there to hurt us. It is a neurotoxin. What is it doing to our children? I don't want to have little kids...
It's saving their teeth is what it's doing.
Is there any proof?
Yes.
Is there any actual proof? I want to see that actual proof put out. I have never seen it. I have never heard it. I have heard the, yeah, 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 it's saving our teeth, it's saving our bones. Yeah, maybe it does, but I've never had any proof. Why was I having more seizures? My doctor told me that it was from the fluoride. It was complicating my epilepsy. Now, that is a form of discrimination against a handicapped person, if I believe so, because I cannot hold a job because I cannot drive. I am not legally allowed to drive. Ask our police. They won't let me have a driver's license. Would you like me on the road when you're on the road? What if I have a seizure? I could kill you. I could kill me. I could kill somebody else. That is not safe. Now, would you hire me? What happens if I had a seizure in your business? I could hurt myself. I could raise your insurance. I could hurt you. I could scare a customer.
You're getting off-topic now.
It is still wrong.
Eileen?
Eileen Cooper. It is very urgent that we at least warn mothers because we did vote to keep fluoride in the water. And, and, and our own Center for Disease Control is stating that using fluoridated water for infant formula influences a child's risk for developing fluorosis. The Academy of General Dentistry cautions parents to avoid fluoride when making infant food. The American Academy of Pediatrics has advised that fluoride not be given to infants six months and younger. These are our own doctors, our own academy of scientists that have warned us that children should not be drinking fluoride, should not be having it added to their water when they're very young. So, it's our responsibility, if we're going to keep this stuff in the water, to protect the most vulnerable. And every day you don't, there are children who are having this fluoride unintentionally so by mothers who would, would otherwise, if they were informed correctly, not do so. And as, as you being responsible agents to protect the public health, I, I think you're obligated to, to help in this situation. I went door to door for Measure A because I feel very strongly about this as affecting vulnerable portions of our community, and especially the very young. And I came across mothers, about three mothers, who I thought they were protecting their children, saying, oh, yeah, I just realized fluoride isn't good because of this campaign. And I'm, I'm filtering it out for my infant now. I'm using my little Brita filter. So, I would go so far as to say, warn the parents and, and warn them that ordinary, common filters do not filter fluoride. So, I would make sure to add that to the warning. But I think we owe it to our youngest and most vulnerable to protect them. And every day we don't and keep fluoride. And it's, it's, puts the very young, you know, at risk.
Your time's up, Eileen, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes. Fluoride is a neurotoxin. It does affect you. At one time, they thought perhaps it would make the enamel thicker on your teeth, but they know now that that isn't true. And by drinking it, because if you put real fluoride, pure fluoride on your teeth, I don't know, I guess it has some type of an effect. Antidepressants, fluorine, which is Prozac, and Zoloft are mainly fluoride. So, you get, and I talked to the pharmacist, she said lots of people are taking antidepressants here. When they sweeten food, they use grape, concentrated grape juice. Grapes are sprayed with pesticides and then concentrated. You get additional fluoride there. People are getting so much fluoride that they don't even know they're receiving. The Daily Telegraph said the ups and downs of fluoride. And there was a problem against with the valve, and it allowed more fluoride to come in. And what Eric said was, and he's right, that it's just a minuscule amount, that it was something like a small part of a billion, the increase in the fluctuation. What the EPA said was, we thought we had about the right dose, but a symptom of too much fluoride is fluorosis, the mottling in the teeth, the destruction of the fluoride. Your teeth are calcium, your bones are calcium. We know that it gives you thyroid problems, you become hypothyroid. It causes bone deterioration. It causes teeth deterioration when you have too much. So, how do you know how much water, how much fluoride to put in the water if you take antidepressants? If you give your children beverages or food that is sweetened with concentrated grape juice, it becomes a real, we know that whatever we're doing is too much because kids are getting fluorosis. And there's other ways to get fluoride and to protect your teeth. If it were true, the fluoride helps, we would not have the dental problems here that we have. These people have been had exposed to fluoride a whole lot, and they still have cavities.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank Kathleen Kelly for sending me an email telling me that I have a weight problem because of fluoride. And I thought it was because I was drinking too much wine and eating too much chocolate. So, I think what that means is, she did me a favor, and I can keep eating chocolate and not worry about my weight problem.
Donna?
Yes, Donna Westfall, would you please put that PowerPoint presentation on, Robin? Thanks.
Do we really need to do that if the person who is supposed to present it is not here?
Well, I would, I, I think, yes. I would allow the presentation to go forward.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
It's a tool that she wishes to use.
Okay. Parents warned against fluoride in water. It's a fact. In November 2006, the American Dental Association Center for Disease Control issued a warning to parents of infants. The ADA recommends that children under 12 months of age should not consume fluoridated water. Babies under six months of age should not receive any fluoride drops or pills. This is due to dental fluorosis, the lack of demonstrable benefit from ingesting fluoride before your teeth erupt. Here's an example of dental fluorosis. It's an irreversible condition caused by excessive ingestion of fluoride during the tooth-forming years. It's the first sign of overexposure to fluoride or fluoride poisoning. of overexposure to fluoride or fluoride poisoning. Crescent City spends approximately thirty thousand a year between adding fluoride, which is really FSA, hydrofluosilic acid, and having an employee tested on a daily basis. Does it make sense to have over ninety-nine percent of it go towards washing clothes, washing dishes, and et cetera? Since 1980, Crescent City has been using a product called FSA, a toxic industrial waste product, which contains arsenic, lead, aluminum, uranium-238, and more. This toxic soup is classified as a hazardous toxic waste on the Superfund Priorities List of Toxic Substances. FSA is neither, neither safe nor effective. We've been fluoridating for over fifty years, and our dental decay rate is seventy percent, twice the national average. Fluoridated drinking water contains up to two-hundred times more fluoride than breast milk. As a result, babies consuming formula made with fluoridated tap water, exposed to much higher levels of fluoride than a breastfed infant. A baby drinking fluoridated formula receives the highest dosage of fluoride among all age groups in the population, whereas a breastfed infant receives the lowest, virtually zero. You can decide to post a warning on all residential water bills as follows. There's enough room to put in. Your public water supply is fluoridated. According to the Centers for Disease Control, if your child under the age of six months is exclusively consuming infant formula reconstituted with fluoridated water, there may be an increased chance of dental fluorosis. Consult your child's healthcare provider for more information. Thank you for listening, and our littlest residents will thank you as soon as they can talk.
And just for note, that was Councilmember Westfall's public opinion and not the council's opinion, so we have a motion on the floor to table this matter, and what-
Just a clarifying question. Is the motion to table the warning label or the subject of fluoride? It's a little unclear.
I'll learn. I tabled the item of fluoride until it's, we find out the results of the ballot measure.
And I'm not opposed to having information on our annual water report regarding what the Pediatric Association and the American Dental Association says about fluoride for younger children. I don't think that that's a problem, but as far as this topic, I, this, we're not going to bring it up again. It's for the voters. So do we have a motion to table this topic?
It's already been on the, I motioned-
Oh, second, okay. Could we please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong? Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. On to item number twelve. Set, set a date for the following upcoming meetings?
Yeah, Mayor, on item number twelve, we have two meeting dates I'd like to set with the council, you know, for special meetings. The first is a joint meeting with the Crescent Fire Protection District, and under our agreement with the fire protection district, we have a joint meeting on an annual basis, and this would serve as that joint meeting. You know, propose to have that at the fire hall on Washington Boulevard.
It's, it's a Tuesday, it's-
Yeah, it's a Tuesday, May fifteenth at 6:00 PM.
Is everybody in favor of that? It's, it's an annual meeting, and I think we're past due.
Yes, yes, and it's in between the council meetings. We have a council meeting, I believe, on the seventh and then twenty-first. So it's the week in between.
Will that work for everybody?
Yeah, I may be just a few minutes late, but like Rich says, I can just hop next door. I have a, I have a commission meeting at that time.
Okay, and then our budget workshop tentative scheduled for May thirtieth, thirty-first, or June first?
Yeah, that's Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, and my hope would be to have that, you know, during the day, you know, either in the morning or afternoon, probably looking at three to four hour meeting, you know, with the council to take a look at, you know, it's kind of the big picture of where our budget is, looking at our projections, and this will help us bring back to the council, you know, budget document in June.
Does anybody have a preference on the date? It's not all three days, right?
No, just one of those days. I was trying to throw out, and I like to have it, you know, during the day, in order to get staff there and have the directors present, you know, during the workshop.
It'd be the Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, right?
I don't want to do it on a Friday night.
Day. It'd be during the day, right?
It'd be during the day.
Oh.
Well, some of us have a job.
Okay.
So.
At the pleasure of the council, that was just recommendations.
I, I will not do it during the day, sorry. I mean, I can start early, like four, but.
It's a pleasure of the council, and I was actually thinking about having it at the wastewater treatment facility, just a little, you know, more informal. We have the, the big screen there on the TV that we can do a PowerPoint presentation.
You know, I think we ought to try to have everyone there. I'm looking at past workshops. We sort of had them at four o'clock, didn't we?
Four o'clock is fine.
Is that okay?
We can do four.
Yeah, four o'clock, is that okay? What day?
Oh, I don't know.
One of those threes.
Probably Wednesday.
Wednesday's better for me.
The two workers, well, three.
Isn't there a long holiday that-
Well, that's right. There is Monday the day, two days before. Monday's Memorial-
Wednesday?
That's fine. Wednesday's okay.
Wednesday's fine for me.
So May thirtieth?
May, May thirtieth, is that okay with everybody?
Four o'clock.
That'd be great. Thank you.
With that, we'll have any legislative matters?
And just FYI, you know, I don't want to keep workers there for four hours, so I would suggest that you schedule two meetings if we need that to get through the, the budget process.
Any legislative matters?
I don't have any updates.
Donna, do you have anything to report out?
Yes, I attended an economic summit at Elk Valley Rancheria. The food was delicious. The presenters were marvelous. I learned things I hadn't known before about the Rowdy Creek Hatchery, and I will put out a plea for them. They need about a hundred and fifty thousand to keep operating, and I think this is a very worthwhile cause. There were about thirty high schoolers in attendance, and I think that was an excellent addition to that conference. I also went to a meet and greet at the Apple Pedler and met the producers, the writer, the other people involved with this indie picture production going to start next month, filming at Trees of Mystery for one day and at the Patrick Lodge, Patrick Creek Lodge. And that was just a delightful morning. Really, really enjoyed that. And there's one other thing I wanted to mention is that I would like to promote people that are starting new businesses or have businesses, ideas, and I just came across one, and it's a woman in the city who's helping developmentally able adults to produce doggy bones. My dog loves them. They're made with peanut butter, all natural ingredients, and they're marvelous. So I want to thank Mary Curtis for starting a business.
Ms. Shalong?
I also attended the economic summit. I think it was probably the best one that Chambers done so far. I've been going to them every year for, can't even remember how long. It was very well done, and I just applaud everybody that was a part of it. That's it.
Mr. Holly?
Well, I, of course, attended the Transportation Commission meeting, and that was interesting as usual. I'd like to comment, I, Mary Curtis worked for me years and years ago when I was Director of Download Association for Developmental Services, so she's the right person to make something like that go. So I'm glad to hear she's busy that way. So thank you. That's all.
Mayor Protem?
I attended the Visitors Bureau Strategic Planning Session that we had last week, also the Transportation Committee with Mr. Holly, and also the Airport Authority Meeting.
And Mayor, can I just, I need to confirm something. I keep getting sent the Redwood Coast Transit Agenda item, and I had told you months ago that I couldn't sit on that?
I haven't appointed someone, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I thought, maybe I'm the alternate, that's why, you know, but I wasn't sure.
No, I, I had forgotten to appoint someone, sorry. Before I report out on my activities, I'd just like for us to have a moment of silence for Eric Epperson, who died a week ago Saturday. He was an excellent coach, teacher, and he will be sadly missed in our community. And our sympathies to his family. I too attended the economic summit, but then I had to leave for the local Transportation Commission meeting. I attended the Two by Two Harbor Commission meeting with, with, with you and, and Mr. Palazzo, and then I had an exquisite honor and to represent our city with the Los Angeles Bureau of the, I'm, the Japanese largest national newspaper since eighteen seventy-four, that Tamar Sanders and Taro Nikojima, I hope I'm not pronouncing their names too wrong, but they sent me a copy of the paper, and here we are, right, here I am, right here. So I just wanted to, if they're listening to us, let them know that we really appreciated the coverage, their concern, and-
What was the purpose?
They wanted to interview us about the recovery on the tsunami, and we also talked about perhaps having a sister city with Japan, and there, they suggested three different cities who had also been affected by the tsunami, so Mr. Palazzo and I are investigating those, and I'd like to bring that back sometime if the council would be so inclined.
For some of them, I'm thinking we have a sister city.
We do, but we, I remember years ago, that contact was settled.
Well, then we don't. Yeah, they made three suggestions. One was, one was severely affected by the tsunami at March eleventh, and it's a town about our size, and then two other cities that had fishing industry in there, in, as one of their main economies, so it would be a good fit for us. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.